My volume on full bore, cry it now.
Good morning, everyone.
Now I can hear you.
Okay.
All right. All right, I will call our time to time board of commissioners to order a weekly meeting. It is Tuesday, April seventh, twenty twenty. We will start the meeting off with a pledge of allegiance and we will be my leading.
The United States of America and to the Republic of Russia stands on a nation, on a land, in this world of liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have a few household keeping details that we'll mention at the end of the process that we're in right now. These COVID, uh, we'll, uh, um, the general public give them the opportunity to call in, to comment. And those two phone numbers are six oh five eight eight two six two nine seven or six oh five eight eight two six two eight eight. They can be calling during the meeting and then during the open portion of our meeting, we will call those individuals back. We are streaming live, so, um, if any of you that are watching, you can get your word out to let other individuals know that they can go to YouTube and be watching our meeting live as well. Um, so with the conflict of interest items that we will, um, hold on. So that was from public comments. I would ask now if item number three is there a conflict of interest for any of the commissioners on any of the agenda items?
No.
No conflict.
No.
No conflict for, um, Commissioner Johnson and Commissioner Van Duzen are, um, we're trying something to remotely have our meetings. And so they are, um, not here in the presence as they are on, um, um, Zoom account, whatever you want to call that. Anyway, we're zooming them in and so I will be asking for a roll call vote for those individuals when they get to our agenda items. All right, doesn't seem to be a, uh, conflict of interest. Let's do item number four, action to approve the agenda. Have a motion.
So.
Motion by one.
Okay.
Second by Gable. Any additions? None, all favors say aye.
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 Uh, Commissioner Van Duzen.
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson.
Aye.
All right. Item number five, action to approve the minutes of the March thirty first, twenty twenty meeting. Is there, uh, look for a motion and a second. Motion by Gable.
Second.
Second by Johnson. Um, was there any corrections or anything anyone need? Say none, all favors say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Uh, Commissioner Johnson.
Aye.
Commissioner Van Duzen.
Aye.
That motion carried as well. Item number six, action to approve property tax abatement application. Cindy, would you explain for us, please?
We have two property tax abatements today. They are both, uh, taxpayers who qualify for a state, uh, program. So we cannot reveal their being, that would be a violation of HIPAA. Uh, first property tax is an abatement of the amount of eight hundred and fourteen dollars and seventy six cents. The second one is four hundred and seventy eight dollars and fifty six cents. Both passed and something approved or, uh, qualified for a state program.
So.
All right, that was here in the back. I would look for a motion and a second to approve those abatements.
So.
Motion by Gable.
Okay.
Second by Van Duzen. Any discussion? Say none, all favors say aye.
Aye.
Johnson. Commissioner Johnson. Um, Commissioner Van Duzen, we'll go to you next.
Aye.
Okay, yeah. Okay, we got that most. All right, that motion, uh, passes as well. Uh, item number seven, action to approve a resolution to combine precincts to the twenty twenty primary election.
This is an action that I usually have to take for each primary election. It's really not, I mean, different than the previous years, uh, because of the smaller, um, communities that'll be appearing on our ballots. I will be asking you today to combine precincts to, uh, to lessen the number of precinct workers that I'm going to need, um, in the second. I will still use all of my normal polling places, but there will be fewer tables.
Hold on, there's a motion.
And that's resolution twenty twenty dash five.
It is in your package, so you can see which precinct.
So they're combined based on commissioner district races and legislative district races. And then, um, currently the Democratic Party only has one race on their ballot that is the presidential primary between Biden and Sanders. On our Republican ballot, in Conning County, we have two county commissioner races and voters will vote based on where they live, um, if they live in that district. And we have, uh, legislative District Five House race. So everybody in legislative District Five on the Republican Party will be voting on that race or allowed to vote on that race. And then also Senator Brown's and Congressman Dusty Johnson both have primary races at this time.
All right. All right, I have motion by Gable, you have a second.
I'll second then.
Second by Van Duzen, any further discussion?
Um, as I understand, I think one of the bigger reasons for this is just the, the challenge.
Actually, it's not a job we're going to refer primary. I usually do combine precincts. I may be combining a little bit more, um, because there is a risk that I will not be able to find people willing to sit at the polling place on election day because we will still be in the period until nineteen. Um, well, once this resolution, if this resolution is approved, we will, uh, start calling election workers in the next week.
Any other discussion? Say none, all favors say aye. Aye. Commissioner Johnson.
Aye.
Commissioner Van Duzen.
Aye.
All right, gentlemen, all the votes, that motion carries as well. Item number eight, action at deputy reserve of the workers' compensation policy. This is typical of what we do generally in the beginning of the year that we must not have to make additions.
We have ready reserve deputies that started training. We need to add to our list so that they qualify for workers' comp. Uh, benefits, insurance, uh, the person is Tom Luddy, Steve Barber, and Ryan Elliott. Ryan is already a part-time jail employee. We need to see a motion to add those to our list for insurance purposes.
Motion to add a deputy reserve to workers' comp.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Gable, do I have a second?
Aye.
Second by Commissioner Johnson, uh, is there any discussion? Say none, all favors say aye.
Aye.
Um, Commissioner Johnson, I think I heard you said, uh, and Commissioner Van Duzen.
Aye.
For all votes, and that motion carries as well. Item number nine, action to approve Delta Dental, that's a renewal. And that was in your package as well. Cindy, if you want to explain that, please.
Every year we get a letter from Delta Dental recommending, um, a renewal. Their analysis suggests a twenty seven point three percent rate increase. However, based on the rate stability program, they have limited their increase to five percent. Well, if they go employees, the Delta Dental insurance premium would go up two dollars and twelve cents. Employee plus spouse would go up three dollars and eighty-two cents. And a family policy would go up five dollars and fifty-eight cents. The county changed the whole single rate to go down and fifty percent of the employee's spouse and the family premium.
Do you have a better explanation? I have a motion, please.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Gable, do I have a second?
Second.
But Commissioner Van Duzen, uh, any other second, any, uh, discussion? Um, hearing done, all favors say aye.
Aye.
Uh, Commissioner Johnson.
Aye.
Commissioner Van Duzen.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries as well. Item number ten, um, action on a request from Conning County Title Scan Records in the Register of Rights Office. Anyone have particulars on why this is on the business?
No, this was, this was a direct request from the title company to revisit the action from last week. Uh, they do have a number they'd like, you should call that back if you want to put it on the Polycom, just that one.
I'll just put it in.
Yep.
Madam Chair. I just wanted to, uh, give a little bit of background on this. Uh, late last week, I was contacted by this, uh, organization asking if we would reconsider the. I was, uh, contacted by an individual representing this, uh, particular organization, asking if we would reconsider our, um, the policy or procedures on allowing people into the courthouse to conduct their business, uh, uh, the title companies in particular. And, uh, I informed them at that time that they would need to, uh, come in front of the commission to, uh, to seek that approval. And that is why that is on the agenda, so. Just to let you know that that's the status, that is not the same organization that came before us last week.
Yes, that is the same request that we had on.
Right, okay, okay.
Okay, so we have a gentleman on the phone, uh, you can state your name and then just give, um, some input as to your reply.
It's not sure. And, uh, last, we had an adversary across town, so we felt like we were explained exactly what we were willing to do. Uh, what, what I've been asking is if we could come in for five days from the twentieth to twenty-fourth of April. And we would be well, well aware of the grounds for that. And minimal contact, and if it was possible, we would also, uh, do, well, if there was a room that she could move the books into, then we're not hurting anybody. We would take that to, because this is our last step, we have to deal with her in order to open our business. We don't, you know, we don't know how long you guys are gonna be closed or whatever, so that's whatever. We're asking for this.
How many books are we talking and what records is it that you're missing?
Uh, it's some federal reasons, it's been a state of divorce, I think there's twenty, twenty-five, twenty-eight books in one. I don't know, I don't want to say I've gone.
Okay, um, we have a register of deeds here present as well. I guess I'd like to get a little input from her about your request.
Um, I guess I'm not totally clear on what it is that you're needing. Um, from my understanding, that's not been decided yet. Um, as far as our, from what I understand, what you're talking about doing is our state federal taxing books. My understanding is that you actually need the original documents and that our books are indexing. And also that you're needing the Tony Aiden. And that's a book separate from the state federal taxing. And my question is, when did you realize that you needed these documents?
Uh, we had realized, um, right around between the February fifteenth and March first, somewhere around there. So we did.
Okay, um, I guess, is there any other comments from Commissioner about this issue?
I, uh, I'm trying to. Is that better?
Yep.
Okay. We've got a closed courthouse until, uh, we don't know when, except for a few exceptions. Uh, I don't think we should make an exception on this. There's a lot of businesses that are hurting. There's a lot of businesses that are closed. And I think that this is one of those things that just can go on until we get it finished, get through this virus thing.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner.
So, you're only gonna say, I mean, oh, did you say it last week?
All right, so, um, I guess the, uh, Commissioner Van Duzen, I have Commissioner Johnson here, uh, comments from, uh, your fellow commissioners? Do you have any important?
Well, I guess I didn't hear, uh, Commissioner Gable, he was not audible on my end here. But, um, the, the question that I have is, this organization is not the same group that we have allowed access to prior. Is that correct, Dan, or it is?
That's incorrect, this is the same.
Okay. Okay.
And it was about a year ago when that process was going on.
Yeah, I just, um, so this is, this is, it's within our community. This is the second, a second title company, but it's the same company that was standing before this. It's not like I've been here for, for decades, this is a new one that's trying to set up.
All right, so what is our answer on this, from this action, are you on our agenda?
So, we don't, we don't get the action, no, this is.
Stand, I just, we did it last week.
So you would ask for a motion?
Okay, so I would ask for a motion on this action item number ten, the request from the Conning County Title Scan Records.
I'll make a motion to deny.
You have a motion to deny, do you need to have a second?
I say that.
Have a second by Warren. Okay, any further discussion?
Um, Madam Chair, repeat the, the, uh, motion.
The motion is to deny the request, the same as what we did last week, to deny the request for Conning County Title to come in and scan the records in the Register of Rights Office. It's not carried at all.
Do you have any other comments, um, interest or that you would like to say?
I asked. So we, so we, you guys are going to roll back. I think any of you have a question.
No, we don't, really, um, unfortunately, there's nobody that has that. Any other further comments, Mr. Stewart?
I have a solid.
Okay. Any other comments?
Uh, if I have any, um, and it shares, this is what we want to stand, so that the thing will come again. So last year, almost by a choice, but the guidance we have in the Department of Health, right now, kind of sympathize with his business. We appreciate that this is kind of our community. But if, if one person is in the middle of a crisis, somebody could say, somebody could, they cannot be affected. Um, we're gonna do, and say, I didn't say that a lot of people might, I definitely, whoever, because it's a close proximity for a long period of time. Single woman that's a registered resource. Well, the guidance is that you can call the T P, everyone else is not, so, so, just so they understand that, that's the kind of thing they don't want. Shut down the registered resources for two weeks, so that's, so, we really sympathize, but on the other hand, you know, this is something that I do on this. Because, uh, I mean, I understand where we're at, but, uh, so, unfortunately, um, that's.
Yes, I would echo that same, um, remarks that Commissioner Gable made. It is critical for our workforce that, that we have to take every precaution that we can to prevent that at this time. I totally agree with that comment. Um, any other further questions? Are we ready to vote? All favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson.
Aye.
Commissioner Van Duzen.
Aye.
Um, any opposed? That motion carries as well. Thanks for calling in this morning, Mr. Stewart.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay. Moving on to item number eleven, asking to honor a payment of things that is on the. Thank you for to.
Uh, I put this item on the agenda at the event, that I'm taking to, yeah, any, um, ideas on your, your schedule.
I think that's something that we were probably going to talk about, you know, with the COVID part, is what, what we in the board feel is necessary.
Well, let me come back to this item if, if we, if we do need to keep paying our bills on, um, a scheduled basis, and that is our holiday for April to April fourteenth, that day.
Those are free.
Well, we're gonna come back to that, we're gonna come back. It will be during COVID, um, number thirteen, discussion. Item number twelve, discussion, have flash and Gary Commission Virtual Meeting. While we are attempting that, it seems to be working very well. I don't know how the rest of you feel, Commissioner Gable, I guess I'll give you the floor.
Yeah, this, this is the gun, so I know there's some trouble with the sound, you brought, some people watching, my mother, and a couple of people, yeah, I thought it was not going to be local. So, there's a hardware thing that I think we can do, but other than that, I'm hearing that everybody online is on, they can hear it straight from. So, um, but, so right around the best beginning, we're trying to implement the social distancing, we have a press here, so. But I think, I think, and it's pretty non-honest, actually, so, we're not.
Thank you for doing that. Commissioner Johnson, do you have a comment?
Yeah, if we could clean up the audio, it would be good, but the audio is really poor. Um, when Brenda or Cindy talk, it's real choppy. It cuts in and out, uh, and I can, uh, barely hear Lee now. Uh, but, uh, other than that, that, I can make out what's going on, but it's really, we need to clean up the audio, that's the main thing.
Yeah, what, what I was saying, excuse me, Madam Chair, what I was saying, Myron, is that the, uh, yeah, that, we, we realize that the audio in the chamber is, is rough. There's a, a, a hardware solution that I think we can get for next week. So apologize for the muffledness in the, because we're relying for this, this, just for the loudness of the speaker to get to the computer, um, that you guys are streaming over into the chamber, so that's, that's the tricky part right now. So it's a little bit, we understand it's a little bit muffled, but we're, we're doing our best. So we appreciate people bearing with us. And we, and we, we do have the press here, so, um, which is, which is good, so public opinion is good.
Do you want to leave this item on the agenda? At least we have maybe. Because if there's any sort of, um, cost related, we.
Yeah.
So we can probably, we can just leave it out. Do a third call apart.
Yeah.
Should be good on that. Okay, so, what's that, are you hold on to item number thirteen, discussion, uh, for action, combination factoring into the end of features? Um, I have a few items today, actually, that I will need the okay from the whole group. Um, there, the process started to try to acquire, um, protective gowns. And, um, we were able to, as you all probably seen, maybe on the news, um, last week, Raven is doing this. And we were lucky enough to get, um, get the, uh, get a request in. And, um, so we get requests in, or six thousand, a thousand of them, and there's six thousand and twenty-five thousand. So that's one of those to six thousand two hundred and fifty. The man reached out to me and asked if some would go back on them, with them on this, uh, for our home, the three thousand one hundred and twenty-five dollars. Want you to keep in mind that this is a very important piece to keep in our healthcare professional space. These gowns are reusable, they are able to be sanitized and reused. I guess, I would, I would support it, I think it's important. Um, if we don't do this now, we could be possibly pushed back four to six weeks before we would even be able to acquire them again. So, I would ask, um, for someone to, we make a motion if they need to, um, uh, approve, uh, paying half of that, how I have to acquire or pay for these gowns, don't worry.
Yeah, you can do that.
Okay, that would be my request, if anyone else would, so I entertain to do that.
I'd, I'd make the motion to do that.
Motion by Gable, do I have a second?
Second.
Got a second, thought by Van Duzen. Any comments?
Just, uh, Chair, can you review those, uh, to the amount? So I think you might have to review the amount, and you said it was.
Three thousand one hundred and twenty-five dollars will be our portion of the bill. Um, this is something that we will be able to include on FEMA down the road for reimbursement. It's just critical that we get this order back soon.
And the other question I have is, um, so that would come on the mission, can you see that, please, that?
No, I just, probably our commissioner, uh, who, I think. Until your, uh, it's, you know, it's done, yeah. The other thing is, um, can you mention where his guns will be going?
They will be going to, first of all, the medical professionals in our community that are in dire straits of meeting now. Their, their supply are getting very low. And then the rest will be kept in storage and given out as needed, but it's for our medical professionals in our community. And all of their different locations, um.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Van Duzen.
Is this just gowns, is that what you said, or you kind of broke up? Is it, what type of P P E equip, what it, what is it?
Yes, it is just the gowns, Commissioner Van Duzen, and they are reusable, they're able to be sanitized. If you notice on the news, they're made by Raven, I believe, down in Sioux Falls. And so that's the company that will be making them, and that's where we will be acquiring them from.
Okay, thank you. Did you get all that, 'cause I can, I'm standing close to that, the computer, I can repeat anything. Yeah, I got it, they're being made by Raven Industries down in Sioux Falls, and they're used. I think that's a good move, I think, uh, I think we can partner with our community partners to protect our first-line responders, I think that's important.
Exactly, so we have a motion in a second, um, any other discussion? Say none, all favors say aye.
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson. Commissioner Johnson.
Aye.
Commissioner, pardon? Okay, Commissioner Van Duzen.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries as well. Thank you, and I will let the mayor know, and we'll get those ordered and get them coming our way as soon as possible.
Uh, Madam Chair, before we continue. So, it's, I'm sorry. Madam Chair, just a, just a little bit of, now, sir, we can screen, and we've got a little sound problem. Maybe on a vote, would, would it be okay, or would you call the person that they give a thumbs up for a thumbs down visual on the screen?
Um, no, it has to be.
Just, just a thought, I would leave.
Maybe for Johnson, we'll have to get a closer, something to say. Yes, okay, so, that's first item, um, second item will be discussion in regard to our commission meeting. Does anyone have um any input on that? Whether we should continue to meet weekly or go every other week? If we would go out every other week, if there would be something that would come up that we definitely need to address, we could call a special um meeting and give point of notice to the public, and we can handle it that way if we don't choose to not continue weekly. But I just would like the input from the rest of you.
Do you read that in the tomorrow motion? Madam Chair?
Commissioner, you go ahead.
Yeah, I I am. I think if somebody wants to, yes, go read the motion. I personally am not favoring that. I think it's been, you know, as things are developing, probably because they have a rhythm, so the meetings are going to be a little bit shorter because so many things are slowed down a little bit. But there are issues that are going to need to be made related to the COVID thing, so just add it on the calendar. I think you have some quick meeting to probably, you know, we make a virtual network, so a little better at that time than we can now also. Yeah, we can, we can implement the social distancing more concerned about these.
Anyone else have any comments?
I guess I would like to see us continue to meet on the schedule that we have right now. I think the public's used to that, and I think we do have stuff that we're taking care of each and every week, and I think it's important that we maintain consistency with our meeting meetings. I guess I would, I don't know, I I couldn't hear. Do we need to make a motion? I would make a motion if it is that we leave it the way it is.
No, we don't need a motion. It's only if we were going to change it.
Okay.
We're not. Still getting input going on this commission at this point. Commissioner Johnson, what's your thought?
Commissioner Johnson, do you have any input of whether you think we should continue meeting weekly or bi-weekly? You want to make a comment on that issue?
Well, if we can get the, can you hear me? Can you hear me? Okay, if if we can get the audio cleared up, this this works all right. Um, I I really have no uh issue with meeting as usual. Uh, if Lee, the the burden is kind of on Lee. I guess, you know, that's that's the problem. Uh, I would be fine with meeting every week.
Okay, that's fine with me as well. And one of the benefits of the group, I don't know if the companies are, I don't think some of them are meeting schedules, but it's. I'm fine with that.
Uh, Madam Chair?
Commissioner Van Duzen?
Just real quick, is there a reason why you can't come up next to that computer? Um, because when you were up next to that computer, you were loud and clear. We could hear everything you said great. And I know, I don't know, um, Lee, is that audio YouTube? If she talks into that mic?
It's just on carrier, we're on the on the.
I mean, I think if we could just move closer to that computer, we'd be fine.
I'll just sit here, I'm fine.
I'll just pull this chair and sit here.
Yeah, so the challenge is, we're trying to, you know, have sound both in the chamber over the speaker system in the chamber, and those are the ones that can't, that's harder, they're harder to hear on the computer. And that's that's why we're talking about that adapter thing, but I think we can, I think for next week, we can probably solve that problem. So I I'm, you can hear me now because I'm standing right next to the streaming computer.
Yeah.
One one question, Lee, and I'm sorry for blocking. Would that part be there next week for that device?
I think so.
And here, if we don't have that device, should we just delay one week? Away from that. Not mine.
I will. We'll be able to work through it. I can sit, I can sit over here. Can you hear me better now?
Yeah, that's loud and clear on that mic on that computer. You are perfect, so.
Okay, I'll just sit here, and I think everybody else can hear me in the room, and I don't know, I'm streaming, we'll just see how that goes. But it's most important that you guys can hear me, so. Okay, so do we have any other items in relation to uh number thirteen of COVID practices and procedures? Anyone else think of any? I know we're, we'll have some things in exact that we may come out of exact and have some um additional information after, but we'll save the rest of that for that. So let's move on to item number fourteen, action to approve claims for payments. Cindy?
Nothing for fourteen or eighteen today.
All right, uh, so item number eleven, then, I guess we should go back up to that. If we're not going to just grab that. All right, so that one. Item number sixteen, action to approve personnel changes. We'll let Cindy explain those.
Uh, we have a couple of personnel changes. First one was Jared Olson, and that is a deputy sheriff. He was doing an anniversary step increase on January first. He's got a letter from seven ninety-eight. He will pay the um his step increases for January, February, and March in April. Steve Lawrie is a deputy sheriff, who is due a step uh step increase on January fifteenth to step six, twenty-five hundred and two per hour. Tyler Barnes is deputy sheriff, due a step increase on January fifteenth, step four, twenty-three eighty-seven. All three of his deputies will be paid.
All right, I would look for a motion to approve those personnel changes. Motion by Waterman.
Second.
Second by Johnson. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Aye, Commissioner Van Duzen?
Aye.
All right, any opposed? That motion carries. Item number seventeen, action to approve travel request. Cindy, we have one of those?
We have one travel request, and this is authorized faculty manager to attend the Van Duzen twenty-twenty spring mosquito workshop, which was scheduled for April twenty-second. That date has.
Been changed, and this authorization would just allow uh Mr. Mollengraf to attend when the conference eventually is held.
Don't move.
Second.
Second by Waterman. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Shot, Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Van Duzen?
Aye.
All right, any opposed? That motion carries.
Lee, I don't know what you did there, but whatever you did, it worked.
It was, yeah, I can, I can tell you, um, the state's attorney ran to her office and got a USB mic that we just put in front of the uh the speaker. That's basically, it's not the ideal solution, but it's it's better.
All right, this is a work in progress, and we're going to get there eventually. Um, item number eighteen, public notices. We don't have to worry about that at this point. Um, and item number nineteen, any old business? Anyone have any old business to discuss?
Just Madam Chair?
Yes.
Um, yeah, just uh, I think the commissioner's got a copy of a proposal on a wage or compensation study, so we we just talked about it in the past. That's just for people to be familiar with. Um, where I don't think we're anywhere close to ready to take action on it, but it's, you can take a look at it. I think it, I think the proposal's well put together, and so it's an easy read. So um, you know, we we just something we we've talked about in the past.
Yeah, that was back in February, that we mentioned that it might be who was to do that, and um just because we have, we just need to get things a little bit clearer.
Isn't isn't the cost on wasn't, and what, excuse me, what is the cost of doing that?
Um, off the top of my head, I don't have it in front of me, Commissioner Waterman, but um the uh, it was over, I think the base, the base part of it was a little over thirty thousand dollars, as I recall, but that's in the proposal. And if if people want to see it, see it, you know, we're just talking about it right now, so.
I I've got it on. I think you sent it, and that was fine.
I thank you.
All right. So any other old business? Seeing none, any new business?
Uh, just one thing, um, it's kind of ironic, but the courthouse will be closed on Good Friday and Easter Monday for previously adopted policy, which we have been closed, but we have been answering phones, so the phones will not be answered on this Friday or Monday.
Commissioner Gable?
Yeah, just one one update on the on the sprinkler project. Um, that's uh, that's ongoing. It's actually probably, as long as the the construction workers don't have any symptoms or anything, and there's just a few of them, um, that seems to be moving along. They can, they don't have any people to work around, at least usually, there's sometimes we have a court session or something, but for the most part, it's a little bit easier for them to get that done, and that's progressing.
Um, something else, we've noticed a large number of people who are still coming to the barricades in front of the courthouse. Is there any public service announcements that we could get out to remind people that we are closed to the public? Because they come in here, or they they come to the the front of sidewalk, and then they read the notice, and you know, then they turn away, but to save them some time, if we could get those, like a PSA periodically um with local media throughout the week?
Yeah, go ahead, Commissioner Van Duzen.
No, I just said, we'll we'll get it on here.
Uh, the other thing that I've been contacted about on more than one occasion, where do I pay my taxes? One of the things that I've been contacted by more than one individual, and seems to be some confusion, is where do I pay my taxes, or how do I pay my taxes? Being the courthouse is closed, and so I don't know if the word didn't get out or what, but some of uh, I reminded the people that called to mail it in or drop it in our secure box on the south side of the courthouse.
And I believe the treasurer sent out a notice to all of you that there has been no provision to extend the deadline for the first half property tax payments.
That's correct. We do not, in statute, we as a commission do not have that power to do that, so that cannot be extended out per statute.
I will tell you that we have seen a large increase in mailed-in property tax notices in the last in the last week.
Madam Chair, can I make a comment on that?
Sure.
No, I was contacted yesterday by an individual who who asked me if we would consider taking action to remove the due date on the first half of those property taxes that are due on April thirtieth. I did speak with the county treasurer this morning for uh for clarification on that, and she did provide a a statute which unfortunately does not allow us to make that provision under state laws, so um so those taxes will still be due uh on April thirtieth, so.
Right, and in addition to that, if they do not make the payment by their due date, interest will start accruing up until the time that they pay them, so just so they realize. And just a reminder that if an individual's payment is postmarked on April thirtieth, that is considered in time, and interest will not be applied. So they do go by the postmark. They go by the postmark.
And I just wanted to let that person know that we did research that. That was something that we were looking into, but state law does not allow us to do that.
And we're not alone on that. This is statewide. Those same questions are being asked of other counties and county commissions, and we all have the same answer. It's just by statute, and we have no no power at this level.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
So just to, if I could pick up on what Commissioner Waterman was talking about, just so people know, we we put instructions on our website, on the cottington.org, that's the county website, and there's a there's a link on the welcome page that they can click about doing business um either on, you know, doing county business or actually having to come to the courthouse. And so Commissioner Waterman hit on a couple of them, that you can mail in your taxes, mail in your auto registration. There's a drop box in the back of the courthouse that's emptied daily, so, and if you have questions, please, usually it's the treasurer's office, occasionally the auditor's office, but both of those numbers are on the county website. So we've done um as much as we can think of right now to make this, to make it possible for people to take care of their county business without having to come to the courthouse. And then if, you know, you can always call the department that you need to deal with, um, you know, treasurer, registered deeds auditor, and and work out something, um, and they'll do the best they can.
I was going to mention the the one thing that we did have the capability to do, and we did do that waive that fee um when they mail in for their license renewals, that we are not charging that dollar per registration. So that is the one thing that we could do and did, so we're trying to do what we can.
There's one thing that the county did not do, but the state did. They have some kiosks around town. One of them I noticed at Hy-Vee, and you can renew your plates there also. I don't know if that's on the website or our website. I don't think so.
No, I didn't, and we can, we can, we can add that on the website, just so people know. But yeah, that's, it's the only one in town, is the one at Hy-Vee, yeah.
Okay. Um, we'll move on to item number twenty-one during the open. I'm going to call Rick, our highway soup, so we can get a little update on the condition of our roads with this last moisture.
Madam Chair, while you're doing that, can I have Cindy just kind of give a pressure update on the election process, how everything is going to work as far as absentee ballots and voting during the election, so people know?
Um, currently, we are still waiting for the Secretary of State to certify candidates to us. Um, that has not happened yet. I do, so we have not been able to get any of our ballots printed yet. Um, the Secretary of State, along with all the county auditors, are going to promote vote by mail at this time, since most of our buildings are closed to the public. Um, vote by mail is one of the options that has always been available to voters. Uh, there's an application that needs to be filled out. It needs to come to the auditor's office with a copy of the voter's driver's license, or the uh application has to be notarized. And this is just for early voting. Um, the legislature did not take any action to allow counties to delay the June second primary. So the polling places in Cottington County will be open on June second. Um, if anybody has questions on how to apply for a ballot, and we are getting a lot of email questions sent to us, um, they can call my office at six oh five eight eight two six two nine seven, and we will try to answer any questions that we can. But currently, like I said, these the uh local candidates are in place and ready to go, but we are waiting on the candidates that get certified to us from the Secretary of State's office. And no, um, no information yet on when that will be coming.
Okay, thank you.
All right, we have Rick on the line. We'll let him talk about uh what is the condition of our roads after our last moisture that we received over this past weekend. Can you hear me, Rick?
Yes, good morning.
Good morning.
Um, we have two roads that are currently closed due to high water. One is one sixty-seventh, that is County Road eight one, which is north of Henry, it's over by uh Stink and Long Lake. There's a section in there that is closed, the water is over the road. We're trying to keep the road open on the east end for the two families that live on that. That's kind of a daily process to see if we can keep that open. And then uh the other section is on County Road one hundred and sixty-eight, which would be eight two, where we built up last fall to help the feedlot get out. That went underwater again this spring. Uh, we raised that section of road roughly three feet out of the water, and uh between two and three feet, and it's it's inundated with water again, so we're going to have to do something there.
Uh, how far is that under Rick?
Uh, most of it, there's just a few inches right now, and it's just where there's a few uh dips that were in the road, but uh I haven't got to that yet this morning. I'm, after I get off this phone call, that's where I'm, my next place destination is, to look at that to see what, and I'm trying to secure some uh material that is a little closer to the job site so we can start hauling in there. This may be something that we may need to bid. I will talk to Brenda after the meeting and uh and Cindy and go from there, but currently those are the only two roads that we have closed at this time. Everything is really soft, so anybody that has to haul anything, please load lightly.
Just one more question, Rick. We've got three new uh gravel trucks on order, and what's, what's the update on those?
I can't give you an update because the place that made the boxes in Minnesota is closed, so I don't know when they'll reopen, so I have no idea when we'll get those.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions for Rick while we have him on the line, Commissioner Van Duzen or Commissioner Johnson? Hearing none. Thanks for the update, Rick, and we'll be in touch.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, have a good day.
You too.
Thanks, bye. Okay, so we are done with the open. I checked in auditors, and we've had no one call in that we need to call back with. So I would ask now that we enter into executive session under number one, discussion of personnel, and number, where's the one about contracts, number three, preparing contract negotiations. So with those two items, I would ask for a motion to go into executive session.
So moved.
Got a motion by Waterman, second by Gable. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Van Duzen?
Aye.
All right, we are in executive session, and we may have some, some things that we'll be discussing afterwards, after we get out some motions, so.
Yeah, I'm going to stop the stream for now for executive session.